Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Reese, will you take attendance, please?
President DeElessandro.
Here.
Vice President Shaffer.
Here.
Secretary Reese, here. Treasurer Hanser.
Present.
Trustee McDonough.
Here.
Trustee Summers.
Here.
Trustee Whitney.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda? I do not have any. Okay. Did we get any submissions for scheduled public comment for agenda items? Okay, there weren't any. Okay, item number four, the consent agenda. Meeting minutes of May 9th and for our regular session and our closed session. There is a motion. James?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Some more support? Amanda? Any discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. So, very pleased tonight to have a couple of very positive things to report to you. Tonight Todd Barles, our Executive Director of Student Services and Wellness, is going to come up with his troupe of both two and four-legged friends to tell us all about the part that our Wild Pack plays in our recovery plan.
Yes?
So, before I introduce Caitlin and Oscar in order to share about our update on our Wildcat Pack, I want to also share, we've got some flyers on the back table regarding our mental health event on May 31st, which is next Wednesday at Oxford High School. That will be Anthony Grupito. North Oakland Community Coalition is one of our community partners and they're coordinating this with us. And we will actually be focusing on our Oxford Community School secondary students. So, the event is really for kids 13 years old and older, as well as the rest of our community and their families. And currently, we have, I think, just over 100 people pre-registered for the event. So, we do have flyers in the back. Please make sure if you're here tonight, grab one and pre-register. So, we will have resources also available that evening in the pack. Some of the community partners that we'll have there with resources includes New Oakland Community Coalition, New Oakland, Haven Wake, Oakland Family Services, Oxford Addison Youth Assistance, Easter Seals, the Oakland Community Health Network, All For Oxford, and La Familia will be there as well. So, they will all be providing mental health resources that our families will be able to access through the summer. So, we're excited about that. With that, as an update to our three-year recovery plan, as part of the mental health portion, we do have our Oxford Wildcat Pack. And as we've grown our pack over this current year, we've received our dogs, we've identified handlers. Caitlin, as our lead handler in the district, has done an amazing job with introducing those dogs, not only to their host families, but also to our schools and our students. So, Caitlin, with that, how about you come up? And I will turn the mic over to you and I will run your slides for you.
All right. Thank you guys so much. Oh, perfect. All right. Thank you guys so much for having me. I'm super excited to share all the success that we've had so far as our first year with the Oxford Wildcat Pack. Do you want to go ahead and click for me? So, like Todd was saying, this is a part of our three-year recovery plan is our Oxford Wildcat Pack. And so, here it has 11 dogs that we will have, but by next school year, we will have 12 dogs, a part of our Oxford Wildcat Pack. So, this is the first year that we've implemented this. So, it is a therapy facility dog program. So, all of our dogs are owned by the district and they are certified therapy dogs. You may have heard of service dogs or social-emotional support dogs, but our dogs, their job is to serve many people in one setting, whereas a service dog or social-emotional support dog will serve one person, but in many different settings. So, there's a clear difference there. So, ours are certified therapy dogs. Each building is going to have a dog, except for the high school, they have four dogs. Right now, we currently have three that have transitioned to the high school. Our primary handlers and host families are Oxford school employees. And it's two roles, but one person. So, the primary handler is responsible for the dog during the school hours. And then, the host family is responsible for the dog outside of school hours. So, they welcome these dogs into their homes and into their families. So, one thing I'd like to share is our OWP dogs are nonverbal friends that will always love and accept you without any judgment. I think we can all agree that words hurt. And so, what we've seen with our students and staff is that our dogs just being present and not having to worry about that feedback has been so impactful. So, we're going to all start. So, a few days after November 30th, Deshaun Beasley was in contact with Karen Story, who is the founder of Brighton Area Schools Pack of Dogs. They volunteered to come help us transition back into the buildings with their entire pack. So, what you see here in the picture is them walking me back Oxford Middle School with their 14 dogs and 14 handlers. I will never forget this day, and I call it Brighton magic. When their pack entered their building, we instantly felt comfort and a smile coming across our faces. The handlers were incredible and willing to help support in any way they could. Watching their pack is true magic. And here's an example of that magic. So, our middle school students often will say, give us thank you notes to staff and other staff in the district. So, this student wanted to write to Duncan, who is one of the Brighton Pack dogs. And those are pictures of actually Duncan with our Oxford Middle School students. And it says, "Dear Duncan, you've always been able to make me happy throughout these last few days, and I enjoy your presence." In translation, bark, 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 bark. So, just in a few days, it was amazing how much Brighton's dogs, paw prints, imprinted all of our hearts forever. So, Karen Story, who's the founder, was like, what else can we do? So, what they did was created a GoFundMe page for us. They created a GoFundMe page for us to start our own therapy dog program. And the goal was to get five dogs, but like I said, we have now secured 12 dogs for our district, which is pretty amazing with donations and networking. So, I want to talk about our partnerships that we have. We have Parker Veterinary Hospital here in Oxford. They have donated all services for our dogs. That's routine checks, vaccinations, surgeries, you name it. They are so welcoming and they answer all of our questions about our dogs. And then, we have KT Mobile Dog Grooming. So, Chris, the owner, converted a van into a mobile grooming station. She donates all services. She comes to our parking lot, grooms our dogs, and then we go and pick them up. So, not only is she giving us that service, but she's coming right to the buildings. Oh, go one more, sorry. Other thing I wanted to mention, Pet Supply Plus in Lake Orion is donating, is donating one month supply of dog food for half of our pack. So, we're currently looking for more donations for the rest of our pack, but we're super grateful that we have that for the rest of our pack. As you see, we have, our dogs have an official vest, and this is how we really honor those donors and partnerships on their vest. So, our main partnership is Fort Pastraw, which is actually Karen Story, who's the founder of Brighton's Pack of Dogs. So, she started a nonprofit that assists school districts across the U.S. obtain trained therapy dogs owned by the school district. So, she is amazing, the most selfless person that I have ever met. She is the one who obtains the dog for us, schedules and partners with the training, and then helps us with the transition to Oxford, and then helps us to support us during the school year. So, that is our main partnership is Fort Pastraw. We're super grateful for her. So, some fun things that you may not know is how did we come up with the name Oxford Wildcat Pack? So, we reached out to the Oxford principals and they came up with a bunch of different ideas. We put it in a Google form and they actually voted for the Oxford Wildcat Pack. So, we are super grateful and we love the name, has a nickname, the OWP. And so, we wanted to honor them because they've been super helpful with us transitioning to dogs and partnering with us and how is this going to work in each building. Yeah, as you may have seen, Oscar's saying. As you may have seen, we did a logo contest and we opened it to all OHS students. We had 42 submissions. And then, our handler picked the four finalists, which you see on the screen here today. And so, I'm proud to say that the winner is, is a senior, but now alumni, she graduated last week, Paige Comitosh. So, we are so grateful and super excited. We're going to get some apparel next year. We're going to, it'll be on banners, you name it. So, we're super excited about that. So, one thing that's super important is preparing our buildings, like Todd said, and getting our classrooms prepared in case, what do you do if you see a dog in your building? So, I visited a couple of different buildings, or I provided just like a video with me going through the expectations. But what you see on the screen is at OES on the left, we did a live Zoom. And so, I was in the media center with Oscar, he was Zooming. And we had students that came down and asked live questions. It was super fun and the students learned basically the expectations and what to do and how to approach a dog. And then, on the right-hand side, you'll see that I went to Lakeville and I partnered with Lauren Bates, who is Buddy's handler, and went to the classroom. We want to make sure that those students are extra trained because that's going to be those dogs' special place. So, some might say, what does a dog do on a regular basis or a typical day? So, this is an example. This is Oscar's schedule, so he is not with me all day. He goes to four to five classrooms a day, and he's in the hallways during passing time. He's greeting students in the morning, after school, and same with the rest of our pack. So, everyone has a schedule. They're just like humans. They need routine and they need structure. So, now the fun part. I'm gonna, I know a lot of you have met our dogs, but I want to go through them. We are going to post this on the website. So, if you want to look at the pictures longer, you can see that. Also, we have a Facebook page, so make sure you like the Oxford Wildcat Pack Facebook page. We post often. So, this is Santo. Santo is at OHS. He's a yellow lab and his primary handler is Julie Bebe, who's an OHS special education teacher. We have Bean, who's Bean's here tonight, and she is a black lab. She's at OHS and her primary handler is Dana Brewer, who is an ELA teacher and dance conservatory teacher. Bean spends most of her day on stage. I've never seen a dog so comfortable and proud of both people. So, we're super grateful for Bean. Next, we have Al. He's at OHS. He's a mini Aussie doodle. And he is, primary handler is Brian Edwards, an ELA teacher at OHS. And he spends most of his day in OHS's counseling department. Next, we have Oscar, who's up here. Oscar is at Oxford Middle School and I'm his primary handler. And he is a mini golden doodle. We have Teddy. Teddy's at Oxford Bridges High School. He's also a mini golden doodle. His primary handler is Nikki Flores, who's an academic intervention specialist at Bridges. We have Ally. Ally's at OES. She's also a mini golden doodle. And her primary handler is Julian Jasmore, who's a fourth grade teacher at OES. We have Leo. Leo's at Leonard Elementary. We have Leo here tonight. And he is a mini golden doodle. And his primary handler is Megan Rayner, OELC's, OELC's special education teacher at Leonard. One thing I'd like to note, you see all the mini golden doodles. Leo, Ally, and Teddy are all brothers and sisters from the same litter. So, we have brothers and sisters in our pack. Oscar is from the same breeder, but just a few litters before them. And then, we have Buddy. Buddy is at Lakeville Elementary. He's a yellow lab and his primary handler is Lauren Bates, a fourth grade teacher. So, these are all the dogs that have fully transitioned to Oxford. So, we have eight right now. We have four coming in June and July, and then they will be starting next school year. So, those dogs are... We have Hope. Hope is going to be at OHS. She's a golden doodle. And her primary handler is going to be Kelly Boone, who is an OHS science teacher. We have Lucy. Lucy's going to be at Clearlake Elementary. She's a yellow lab. And her primary handler is going to be Bambi Gordon, who's a librarian at Clearlake. I'm super excited about this because there's so much research out there saying that reading to a dog increases reading scores and reading levels. I hope she's a good listener. So, we're super excited about that. And then, we have Penny. Penny's going to be at DA. She is a birdie doodle. And her primary handler is going to be Michelle Mumbrue, who is a reading support specialist at DA. I think it's kind of funny because Penny's going to be our biggest dog in our pack. And she is at DA. So, she's going to be with our littles. But as you can see from the picture on the screen, she's already doing so much school training and she's doing an excellent job. So, we have no worries there. And then, lastly, we have Jake. Jake's going to be at Oxford Virtual Academy. He is a yellow lab and his handlers are going to be Dave and Karen Herrick, who are OHS teachers. Jake and Lucy are brother and sisters as well. So, on this is, this is our current handlers right now with the eight dogs that have fully transitioned into Oxford Middle School, or I'm sorry, not Middle School. I used to say that. That have transitioned to Oxford. I just wanted to take a second to thank them so much from the bottom of my heart. This program could not be what it is without them. Thank you handlers for opening your classrooms, your homes, and your hearts to bring our dream of having our own pack to life. Your hard work does not go unnoticed and I truly appreciate each and every one of you. So, for the rest of this, it's just fun pictures for you guys to look at of some of the fun things they're doing. They dress up for spirit days, Halloween, every holiday. We get a ton of donations, which is amazing. And so, I am super excited to see what our pack does in the future. This is just in one year, which is pretty incredible for piloting this, but I am super proud of our pack.
And we want to thank you guys for your time and support with the Wildcat Pack. They true, our pack really does provide inspiration to our kids. More than, on more than one occasion, we've been at the high school in the hallway during passing time. And you know, there's three adults here ready to talk to kids. And who do they go to? The two dogs on the floor. And they spend maybe five seconds, you know, petting the dog, whatever, and they get exactly what they need and they're off to class. And so, it's amazing what a dog can do when needed with our kids. So, thank you. Were there any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you so much for bringing the dogs and the presentation. I was really struck by the dogs with the reading specialist and the dogs in the libraries and reading to dogs. What a great idea. What a great, great idea. So, thank you for coordinating all this. I was, I was here at the middle school, I think, one of the welcome back days. And I was talking with one of the high school principals from Brighton and we were talking about the dogs and the program. And he was telling me how amazing Karen was. So, thank you so much for spearheading it here and making it and coordinating so that it can happen here and to all the people involved. It is amazing how much we've done in really quite a short period of time.
Mary, it is amazing. I gotta give credit to Laura Assomi and Caitlin Moberg. They have just knocked it out of the park. Our partners in the community just doing an amazing job facilitating many of our needs for our dogs. And it really does help. We continue to seek out some of those partnerships. But yeah, currently, we are so happy with the partners we have in our community. So, it's a real blessing.
Thank you, babe.
Thank you.
Ryan is going to talk to you about another thing that we're doing, oh, that we're doing here, and that's the Wellness Fair. So, is it that the microphone on the podium doesn't work or?
We have two now.
We have two. Okay.
Yes. So, good evening, board. It's my pleasure to be in front of you to cordially invite you next Thursday, June 1st, back here to Oxford Middle School. We are hosting our first annual Wellness Fair in the gym. It is from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. And this Wellness Fair is for all of our staff and their families to come out. We have 39 vendors who will be joining us. We have a number of giveaways and raffles for our staff. And this comes from our three-year recovery plan. Our goal is to establish a culture of wellbeing that will provide employees the ongoing support and resources needed to be successful. And an action step in achieving that goal was forming our Wellness Committee, which we formed back in February. And our team has done an amazing job coordinating all of these vendors, all of these giveaways for our staff to be recognized and to connect them with resources within our community. So, we're very thankful as well to our community for their generous donations. So, we'd love to see you back here at Oxford Middle School next Thursday, 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. in the gym. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
The only other thing I want to call your attention to is we were able to post this afternoon the questions and answers from the three guidepost meetings relative to their first report. And you have hard copy, but it's also on our webpage. That's my report.
Okay. Item number six, Board of Education meeting schedule approval. You had that in your packets, something that we did kind of go over on our last meeting. We, as we stated at our last meeting, our calendar for our board meetings goes from July 1 through June 30th, just as the school fiscal year goes. So, like I said last week, or our last meeting, if there are any dates on here that are conflicting that you know of now, please let Angela know so we don't have more than one or two of us gone at any given meeting in case there's something that comes up that we need to address. We want to make sure we have enough people to have a meeting. So, okay? So, I will need a motion to approve this calendar. Dr. Reese?
Move to approve the 2023-2024 Board of Education meeting schedule as presented.
Is there support? Support, James? Discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next on the list is our item B, which is our second reading of policy number 9150, school visitors. Do we want to go ahead and make the motion and discuss the motion during, after it was supported and we can have a discussion afterwards and then we'll vote on it? So, does anybody want to read the motion? Mary?
Move to approve the second reading of policy number 9150, school visitors.
Okay, is there support? Support, Amanda? Any discussion? So, do you want to hit the high notes or the low notes of what was added or subtracted on this so that we can be aware?
Go ahead, Amanda.
Okay, sure. So, the other two that we had considered weren't, we decided, relevant at this time. So, that's why those you don't see in front of you. We went forward with this policy. And I know that we had discussed the shall and the may. So, according to legal, and it was our opinion as a committee, that we impose the conditions on a shall basis for registered sex offenders who wish to participate in school activities being allowed on campus. And you'll notice that in paragraph three that's highlighted in green. We have conditions shall be imposed, not may. Vicki is confident that her administrative guidelines going along with this will satisfy those requirements. And then, the only other changes were a couple of grammatical changes and that the superintendent be notified and that if board members during a visit find anything alarming, that they immediately respond to the superintendent. And that, that was pretty much all of the changes that we had made. So, if the board agrees with the committee's decision, we can go ahead and approve.
Okay. Is there any further discussions or questions? Heather?
So, okay, let's read it so everybody can know what it is. Because they don't have it in front of them and they might not remember from reviewing the board packet. Individuals who are registered sex offenders and wish to participate in school activities may be allowed on campus. Conditions shall, that's the part that Amanda was referring to. It used to say may, and now it's saying shall. Conditions shall be imposed by the superintendent on the individual's campus visit, governing the terms and conditions of the visit. These conditions may include, but are not limited to, the need to receive prior permission before entering campus, required check-in, and approved escort in the building or at an event and time or location limitations while on campus. So, let's make sure we're clear exactly what that means. Individuals who are registered sex offenders and wish to participate in school activities may be allowed on campus. Conditions shall be imposed by the superintendent. What are those conditions?
Do you want to give us a list of those conditions which you have on your administrative guidelines?
The administrative guidelines have not been written yet. And of course, one thing that we will do is we will get sample administrative guidelines from other districts and from Neola. If Neola doesn't have one, we'll get them from Trune Law, who also has a policy around this particular issue. So, the guideline's not been written yet. It's typically not written until the board passes the policy. It will, as it says, it will certainly look at whether or not we're going to require prior permission. And my thinking now is we'll find that's pretty much a general practice and will probably be in ours, but I can't attest to that yet. I am very certain there's going to be a required check-in and an approved level of escort. Different events may require different levels of escort depending on the event and the occasion. And of course, time and locations of limitations while on campus are going to, we're going to have to address that, you know, football games may be different than the visiting the third grade classroom or being at the parent-teacher conference. So, the guidelines are going to be appropriate for time, place, and event. And they are probably not going to be the same for all of those things.
I guess how I would look at it, just for a point of clarity for myself, if you're looking at it from a perspective of a parent at a parent-teacher conference, I think there would be more latitude in that circumstances. The parent is entitled to participate in their child's education. That may look a lot different than if they're going to the play or a football game or whatever the case may be. So, I'd look forward to seeing what those guidelines are and I'm sure we'll have a thorough...
We'll share them with you when they're done.
Okay. Any other questions, thoughts? Heather, I'm sorry.
I guess a follow-up. Let me just read this again. Individuals who are registered sex offenders and wish to participate in school activities may be allowed on campus. Why would we allow somebody on campus with children and a sex offender?
That's a law. That's a legality. There's no choice on that sentence. The only choice was on the second sentence of whether you may or shall impose limitations. But when Neola gives you a policy, they give you the reference to legal and we can send that to you. But, and maybe Amanda and Mary want to speak to that. But there was, I don't even remember now the exact citation. I don't know if it was governor or legislative. But there was a legal requirement that they would be allowed.
It's recent and we discussed it briefly before. It was in the governor's package not too long ago of new bills that it took away the fact that registered sex offenders cannot be within 1,000 feet of schools and such. And it removed all of those restrictions. So, we have to be compliant in that regard because it is the law.
But remember, yeah, the word in the first sentence is may. There may be also some definitions in the guidelines that indicate when, because a may is, it can be a yes or a no. But you have to qualify if you're going to say no. You have to be able to qualify it. And that has to fit the legal definitions of when you can say no. So, the first sentence was may, not shall. The second sentence was, if they're allowed on, there shall be guidelines.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Amanda?
I do just want to point out, because I know we've had an issue recently, this policy is available online and has been, but in paragraph two, it does also note that the district can prohibit the entry of any person, or to expel any person when there is reason to believe that the presence of such a person would be detrimental to the good order of the school. So I just wanted to note that that is also included within this policy, and that's policy 9150.
Okay. Dr. Reese?
I think one request to the policy committee is when there is legal reference material in the policies, that we have it in the footnotes, if possible, so that way we can redirect back to that legal. But I just looked up, it was past December 30, 2020, so it's actually been in process for three years, essentially, almost.
This is some of the policies, yeah, this is in the stack of policies that you're trying to catch up with, that were interrupted with first COVID and then, of course, the tragedy. And so, this is in that batch of catch-up policies that are coming to you, so. But we will, toward the end of the summer, you'll start getting some of the policies that are going to be in the new batch, and we will make sure we have those legal notations in there for you.
Okay. We good? Any other questions, thoughts? Okay. Thank you. So, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Finance and Operations, Mr. Barna. And Andrea. Sorry. You can go ahead and use that one, Sam.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start off with talking about a very simple, lady topic here, and that is the post-construction storm water control regulatory mechanism, and what you have in front of you. So, I know you all have been ready to hear about this. And so, what this is, is basically the district, you know, we have our storm sewers, and this is required by Michigan Eagle, or the old Department of Environmental Quality. And so, we have in place within our maintenance, basically, our maintenance department has procedures to review, as well as occasionally check a lot of our storm sewers within the district to ensure that they're not clogged and they're operating effectively, and that there is no outside influences going into the stormwater drains. So, what this, what you have in front of you is just something that the board does need to review and approve as part of Eagle's procedures. So that's what you're looking at right in front of you. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask away, and I am requesting you to vote this evening on accepting this.
Quick question.
Yes.
Is there, is there a, do we have a, like a maintenance plan around all of our storm sewers, our inlets that will go through, and then, we'll make sure that they're clean-up debris, everything like that?
Absolutely. What this is, is there's a plan behind this that actually supports the stormwater management. And it's considered post-construction because obviously they're already built. If you're constructing new, there's a pre-construction list as well that you have to abide by before you can actually get departments and get approval.
I guess what, maybe I didn't ask it properly, so we had the property just south of the high school? Is that, everything is already set to go, we don't need to worry about any debris, anything like that? That's all been taken care of by our staff, because if I recall correctly, when we purchased that property, that was part of the deal that the seller was going to go ahead and put those, that storms drain in and connect to the water.
That's correct. Currently, what's on the site now, those drains go to our detention pond, and anything on-site goes within the detention pond. There has been nothing constructed yet on our property, with obviously the setbacks that were requested when we purchased that property. So nothing's been done yet by that accompanying property owner.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on this?
So, Sam, we're just following the rules. We did our work, and basically what this is, is we're filing what we need to file, and you're confident that we're doing so in good faith?
That is definitely the case. In fact, last Monday, I had Eagle come to visit the district for an audit. An audit hasn't been done since 2012, before I actually came to the district in 2015. So, it's been long overdue, and there were several reasons from an Eagle administrative standpoint where they haven't been able to come out. And because of COVID and our tragedy, they gave us some grace and were able to come out last week, so. But normally, it happens every five to seven years.
Okay, well, and that's helpful, because we want to be sure that we are in compliance, you know, and that we're being good citizens.
Absolutely.
And we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay. There is a motion. Would somebody like to make that motion, please? Dr. Reese?
Move to approve the post-construction storm water control regulatory mechanism resolution.
Is there support? Support Mary? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, Facility Planning Update.
Okay, well, we have Andrea. Andrea's IDS, she's actually going to talk to you a little today about, first, our Drainer Road property, and proposed reconstruction of that property, and movement of different departments from existing locations, obviously, within the district. Obviously, OVA eventually is the proposal, as well as our loft program, as well as our bridges program. And so... Yeah, that's right. And so, we're going to discuss that.
Of course, very simple.
Very simple. That's right.
Good evening, everybody. As I mentioned, my name is Andrea Everett. I'm with IDS, who's the architecture firm, working with the district on the new development at the Drainer Road property. We have met, how many times?
Several.
Several throughout the past year regarding this property, and I feel we finally come to a resolution on the appropriate programs and the appropriate layout for this building. So, as you can see on the screen here, this is the lower level. The Drainer Road building has three levels, a lower level, main level, and upper. And the goal for this property was to have the bridges program, loft program, and the OVA program occupy the space. So what we've been able to do is carve out space in the lower level, as you see highlighted in blue, for the loft program. The additional spaces in gray are mechanical spaces and support or storage spaces. You can scroll down to the next page. On the main level, in yellow, you see part of OVA's program, and in the dark maroon or burgundy color, if you will, is slated for bridges. Again, gray is support. There's a large dining facility and a large chapel to the right. The large chapel to the right, kind of that square with the angled windows, that space is going to be programmed for community use, for robotics, or for physical space, for both, or for, not both, all three programs within the building. On the upper level, there's room for the remainder of the OVA program, and then some district technology offices as their synergy between those programs. We are, Vicki, did you want to say?
No, I think one of, excuse me for not putting this on. The goal, of course, as you know, the board's goal has been to get the loft program in a place where we could really expand some of the experiences they have in that space. There's a commercial laundry, there's access to a commercial kitchen, their catering business can continue, there's a lot of land so that you can get into landscaping and a lot of things like that. And so that is a marvelous way for loft to be able to expand opportunities for those young people who are looking for ways to enter into a job market that might be appropriate for them. Moving Bridge Miss out of the middle school is, I think you would have every Bridge student here cheering you on, because an alternative high school really needs its own space that really should not be in a middle school. They're doing very, very well. They're good citizens of this building, but they need their own space, and this also would allow that program to expand. And right now, if we had more youngsters that needed that kind of setting, we really wouldn't be able to provide for it. The gray areas there would also allow, we have some ancillary staff that usually has a hard time of finding for a place to land with a constant desk and a constant place to put their things. A lot of our student services personnel, a lot of our instructional support personnel could also be located there. The blue area, that would be technology on this floor, or is that the?
That is technology.
Yes, and the colors, I can't always remember. But the blue area is, I think, really going to benefit the district, because right now we have technology sitting at OVA, we have technology sitting at Drainer, we have technology in different places all over the district. And these technology minds do not have an opportunity to get together, to collaborate, to look at what each other is doing, to make sure we're not being redundant, to make sure we don't have gaps in how we're covering our technology needs. So simply by having them housed together, along with their technology equipment, which is most of the lower level gray that you saw in terms of storage, is going to be a benefit. Of course, OVA, we're renting facilities, it's costing us money to be in a mall, storefronts in a mall, and when you see this particular level, and then you see the level that was below, all the yellow that was OVA, we've got them on two floors, spread very nicely, an area where they can actually have lunch together, an area where they can actually do large group activities together. And that cathedral could also be used for community events, robotics, dance, maybe an extra-large board meeting if we ever needed it, just saying, you know, there's a lot of space there, so we could do that, too. So I think this is really good use. We might be able to also move some administrative offices there, that would certainly be the administrative offices that have a connection to those programs that are in that building.
Layouts you see today, this is a reflection of our first pass. We've met with all three programs and with Vicki, learned a little bit more about their programs and their needs, and if you will, testified them into this building. This will still have some more refinement before anything gets constructed, and meet with the programs again and further refine the design.
We would be looking at accomplishing this, hopefully, before next fall, so that OVA could actually move in over next summer. We would love to be able to complete sections of the building so that loft could perhaps move during the year and start enjoying their space, and perhaps even bridges. This depends on, of course, when you are comfortable in moving ahead with it. We are looking to fund this project with existing capital outlay money that you have been setting aside for years for purposes of building renovation, and this particular building specifically, and also OVA. OVA is paying for its facility space right now. OVA typically generates more revenue than expenses, and OVA would be able to have, and OVA is, at least half of the space is going to be OVA's, and so OVA would be able to contribute to that half. And if you approve soon, in time, I mean, you can't do it tonight, but over the next three weeks, or five if you needed it, we could actually start construction this summer. We might be able to get loft in by second semester or over winter break, and if bridges wanted to move mid-year, we could possibly get them in shortly after second semester, and then, over the summer, we would complete the OVA, or sections, and get them moved in over the summer so that they could have a fall '25 start.
Question for you real quick. How much space does this leave us for fully moving central office?
Oh, no.
None?
No. You would be able to move a few administrative offices, and the offices we would for sure be wanting to move would be those that support these programs. So student services, design, the wellness, PBIS, MTSS, people, all those people that are doing student supports, if they don't have a space right now that's appropriate, they could move there. A few of those people are currently in the central office downtown, which is why other people in central office are working in hallways and don't have offices. Pardon?
I've seen that.
Yes, you've seen the hallway workers?
Yes.
And so, the one thing it would do for central office is it would alleviate some of that space so that people could actually work in a space that wasn't a hallway. But I think for sure you'd have to keep your superintendent's office, your business office, your HR office, maybe part of the instructional offices at the downtown location. This can't house all the students that we want to house there, and all your administrators.
If we fit everybody in, we'd have to reduce size into a smaller square footage than what they utilize today, and we would not be able to allow for any growth, for any department.
So then, would the thought be, over a period of time, whether that's five years, 10 years, whatever that period of time looks like, to construct a building on those grounds so that we could get out of central, or get out of the central office building? I guess my question, I mean, that's what we've always anticipated. Our goal, from the very beginning, was, let's move out of downtown.
Well, yes.
Let's move out of downtown.
Not to build out, we never talked about that, I don't think. Well, I, you know, when we discussed, when we discussed the building...
We wanted to get everybody out of there.
Oh, I'm sorry. When we discussed the building, we, of course, and you, the board, also directed us, you said students first.
Right.
And so, we completed the plan with students first as the default, and then, what might be left over? Now, the thing of it is, in five years, OVA may grow. And if OVA grows, giving over the space it needs to grow is probably going to be more important than moving my office off of Main Street, I think. That would still be where you'd want to go. So I would say we have to wait and see where these programs go, how much growth there is, how much space they need, and then, you, the building is already owned by the district, so there's no cost to having that building. OVA, in the strip mall, there is a cost to having that building in terms of the rental, the leasing, the utilities, but where we are, it's no cost to the district. The other thing you have to look at is your overall demographics, your overall student enrollment in all of your other buildings, whether or not space opens up there or not, and you're going to have a slight decline, not anywhere near enough to close a building anytime soon, I mean, not even in a decade. But, so, our recommendation right now is that we keep this focused on students, and then we see where it grows before we make decisions on whatever little bit of extra space might still be there.
Okay. Any other questions? Mary?
I think this is a great timeline. Is it really attainable? I mean, how many, I'm not, I'm not going to, I make it sound simple, but how many extra trips to Home Depot are we going to make? So I want to be sure that we are, and not saying that these people, I'm just trying to make a point. I just want to be sure that a timeline that... I just want to be sure that a timeline that we set down is actually attainable. So that's a question, and I think this is all long overdue, to get these people in their own space. These groups need their own space.
That's a great question, Mary. I am meeting tomorrow with Jacques from IDS, as well as a design-build firm who specializes in this type of construction, to start discussing this, and start discussing timelines, as well as obviously bidding out work to subcontractors, remember, to bring back to you for you to approve, if this indeed is, again, what the Board of Education would like us to pursue. And it sounds like, as we've discussed, that is the case, you know, again, students first here. And so, just wanted you to be aware that, yes, that is coming, a more definitive timeline. And truly, I'm meeting with Chuck, I believe, at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. If it doesn't damage yourself, you will be there as well, I apologize. Yes.
And also, I just want to also add, this is a remodel, it's not building a new school.
Correct.
So, and especially with the design and build, which is how you typically do office buildings, or how you typically do buildings that you're not pouring the foundation for, I think that the timeline can be quicker than what a typical new build would be.
I would like to also, assuming that we're going to go down this road, maybe when we start the process, if we as a board could have a little primer on what the construction process looks like. What comes back to the board, what gets approved, what, you know, what just has to be done because we already approve it, you know what I'm saying? I think it would be helpful for everybody to just have an overview of the process and what that's going to look like.
Sure.
The decisions we'll have to make.
Absolutely, we will do that, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right, I don't see.
Yes, it's, obviously, the toilet rooms at OHS, and refurbishing, and plus that.
So it's been, I think a year has passed since you've seen me last. I visited, attended a board meeting over at the PAC, presented this project to you. We had bid it out at that time, and the bids came in extremely high, to the fact where it was, we decided to table, or the district decided to table the project. We've been able to revisit it and establish a more clear timeline, and we've reduced some of the scope. So, I'm going to step up to the screen if you don't mind. So, the high school here, you'll see the bathrooms in the 300, at the end of 300 wings. And here, will be renovated, along with the cafeteria, toilet room. And then, we're going to be replacing all the drinking fountains and adding high-level fountains, where the lower fountain is a drinking fountain, and the higher level is a bottle filler. We'll be replacing those outside of the toilet room here, on both ends here, and then again, in the cafeteria and over by the PAC. The scope that was removed from the previous project was the stacked toilet rooms. Again, focus on the student spaces. And also, the creation of the new toilet room down in this area. We're not going to be touching that area. We sent the bids out last month, maybe a month and a half ago. Received six bid responses, all of them minus one. We're very tight, which tells us that it was a good bid set, solid numbers. Sam and I interviewed the three low bidders. The lowest bid, who was $400,000 low, immediately withdrew their bid, realized they made a grave mistake. And then the next two bids we interviewed, they both had full understanding of the project. We decided to, with your approval, award to the next low bid, which is cross-construction. We have decided, or I'm sorry, the district has decided to accept alternate number three, which means that this toilet room right here, the pair, will be completed this summer, where the remainder of the scope would be next summer. And that's one way how we were able to save some dollars, by not rushing a company to complete it all in one summer.
I do want to add, however, if the firm, upon your approval, can get that set of toilets done quicker than we anticipate, and they anticipate, they will be moving on to other toilet rooms that we deem the most appropriate, and again, trying to get as much done this summer as possible. But I just, we're really picking for that south pair to be done first this summer. So I just want you to be aware. The quicker they can move, the better, obviously, but we have to be, obviously, aware of the time constraints that we have, with schools starting back in, you know, late August.
Yes, with your approval, we will work with them to pull as much as they can ahead. It might be the drinking fountains would be completed over winter break, and then they'll tackle the remainder of the toilet rooms next summer. But that's a conversation we need to have with your approval with the construction.
Heather?
I'm trying to go, I remember the presentation at the PAC, I'm trying to remember.
It's been a while.
It has been a while. Were we talking about, so is there no doors on the bathroom stalls?
No, the stalls themselves will have doors. It's the doors into the room, the entire room, which will be removed at the entry point. All of your toilet rooms were designed and constructed for privacy, meaning if that door is removed, and if you're standing in the hallway, you cannot, there's no sightlines into even the sinks and the mirrors at the sinks. So there's full privacy. By removing the doors, it helps with security and with oversight of the children during the day. But we are leaving the door frames. So the metal frame which the door connects to will be left, and the doors themselves will go into storage, so if you.
Is there a wall still in between each toilet?
There are partitions, you know, like you would see at a typical bathroom, in, you know, a community bathroom, there's stalls and doors to each individual toilet, but the toilet room whole, we don't have a door. We'll be storing those doors somewhere in the district. So if there is an issue, and you're finding, you're having remorse, they can be installed, or reinstalled, I should say.
Okay.
Right, yeah, no, it's the outside door between the entire.
Amanda?
So, there would only be one pair that will be completed this summer on the south, okay. And as far as the materials that are going to be used to replace, I understand that they're a little better as far as when it comes to vandalism. I know there's been some complaints that we have doors that don't lock, and there may be some vandalism going on. But these materials that we're going to be using are stronger than what we currently have, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have enough restrooms for code?
Yes.
Because I thought that was in the October presentation as well.
Yes, you do, Nico.
Any further questions?
Just clarification real quick. The other bathroom that is currently walled off is not part of this. We are not doing anything with that, when this, okay, thank you.
I just had a comment. We do need to take care of the student bathrooms, but I'd love to squeeze away for the teachers to get sinks that work over there by the small gym and the robotics room. It's hard to get those sinks working, so I'm just putting a plug in for getting a little bit of hardware done there, Sam.
I wasn't aware of that, number one, and that is definitely a maintenance operation that we will have to address very quickly, but I was not aware of that. So I will ask our team, the maintenance, to see if we could do some replacements and ensure that they're working properly, that's the least we can do. Thanks very much.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to, I, I just, and I haven't been in there in a little while, Sam, so maybe that was taken care of already, and I don't know it, but.
I'll speak with you.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that, though, letting me know, because if it is indeed an issue, it needs to be obviously addressed.
So, and I'm sorry, just to add on to that, Sam. So when there is an issue like that in the building, you know, how does that, how does that work for the community? I'm here, I'm here at an event, and I'm finding like the bathroom sink is not working properly. Like, what, what would I do to let people know as a community member?
So normally, what would happen is if a community member came, and there was some issue with, let's just say, a bathroom, as you're discussing, I would basically try to find a custodian or some employee of the district who was hopefully there. And again, after hours, it's obviously lead custodian with several other custodians there, and ask them to, you know, basically, address it with, obviously, they can fix it right away potentially, usually not. Usually, it's, if it's a non-working sink, it's something that's going to have to be ordered usually and addressed at a later time. But just to bring it up to a custodial staff member, and then that custodial staff member will obviously bring it up with also the building administration as well, so they're aware.
So that's the way we would know. We do need to know if something is out of order.
Okay.
I think also, we might need to remind our staff that if they notice the sink isn't working, that it could be reported up the chain, and we could get maintenance out to fix it.
A hundred percent.
We'll work on that, too.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's just wanted to let people know, it's okay.
Sure. We need to know about it, and again.
Is Sash here today? No? Because I was just, as we're thinking, you know, as you go outside of all these doors to report a maintenance issue, maybe we have just a little QR code. Scan the QR code, bathroom, bathroom number, you know, gym one. You could report it, whether it be a student, let's hopefully students aren't reporting. Oh, I just think that's fun. But you see, you see what I'm saying, at least it gives our staff, if we're going to use technology, let's use it to our advantage instead of, you know, from a perspective of, well, you know, we don't want to let everybody just inundate the custodial staff. But it seems like, it's a big building, they're all big buildings, and you can't cover everything all the time, but if you're getting prompted. And then we know, if we have five, or six, or seven different times it's been reported, we've got to, we can go back to our maintenance staff and say, you know, it's been reported five, six, seven times, and it's still not repaired.
I do like your idea, you know, overall.
That's all I got for the year, Sam, I'm just telling you. I'm done with that one.
Really, I think that is a fantastic idea. We need to get there, I think that's a really very nifty, and I'm sure other districts have it. You know, with, we have a large staff of three in the district running around constantly, and quite frankly, anything that we can do to make things more efficient for them, and get more done, and the amount of time that they're working, it'd be fantastic in order to meet these demands. So I do like it, and I, we can have that conversation, you know, with Sash and others who could maybe develop an electronic form that would obviously go to maintenance as well, and we'd be able to track that.
Okay, great.
I did have one more question on the bathroom. And maybe it was in the material from before, and I didn't see it. Are we going to be upgrading any lighting, any like energy efficiencies going in, anything like that, or this is strictly sinks and stalls and?
The lighting is going to remain existing. After the tragedy, all of the scenes were replaced, and the lighting was done at that point. As far as efficiencies, all of the flush valves for the urinals and toilets will be touchless, as well as the sink faucets will be touchless. So students can't leave the water running?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions, thoughts, ideas? I'd like that technology one, good job. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. There is a motion, would somebody like to make that, please? Heather?
Move to approve the bid recommendation from IDS for the OHS bathroom renovation project to Cross Construction Group for the total cost of $782,900, as presented.
Is there support? Support, Mary, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, Sam, proposed financial forecast.
So Courtney and I, Courtney Nikowski and I have been working alongside other district administrators to help develop this first-ever, for the district, since I've been here at least, financial forecast. Along with Dr. Markovich, is just, you know, with her knowledge, great wealth of knowledge, and in other districts, and obviously with open schools, she's had a lot of background with financial forecasts. And as have I, but not in a school setting. And so, as we're all aware, you know, trying to predict what your funding is even next year sometimes can be very, very challenging. However, because of the large amount of grant funding that school districts in particular have received from both the federal government, as well as the state, and obviously, local government, due to COVID, and then for us specifically, due to our tragedy, it really necessitated us to really take a hard look at what our financials are going to be, not just for the current and next year, but for a longer-term forecast. Because as other districts are dealing with much, most of these funds, there is going to be a, let me just say, a financial reckoning in future years for all school districts because of those funds that will sunset eventually. And so, again, this was the reasoning behind doing this financial forecast. And so, what you have in front of you, what I'm also sharing on the screen here, as you can see, is a multi-year format. We have this by function code at a high level. There's, you know, I think between 7,000 and 8,000 accounts, Courtney, approximately, if you look at both revenue as well as expenses. So there is a lot behind the scenes going on that is rolling up to this summary. And I know if you look back at the presentations that I have provided in the past specifically related to the current year and future, you know, year budget, there are several items that I can't share with you because it's just, there's too many spreadsheets. And it's very similar for this, I could share it with you, but it would bore you, and it would be the nitty-gritty detail. So what we have here is, again, the roll-up by function. So what I wanted to start with, and you can see in column, in the second column, it shows 2023. 2023 is the current fiscal year. So this is a draft version of what I'm going to be bringing to you in three weeks as a, the numbers will eventually change a little bit, just because we're not closed with the books, and we don't close our books until June 30th, as a reminder. So even when I bring these numbers to you in three weeks, they're still going to be changing, but we have to have a point in time. So the first column, again, is this year, and I wanted to share with you kind of the local revenue that we have assumed in the current year. And again, local revenue predominantly is our local property taxes. And as you can see here, the largest is our state revenue, which is our state foundation allowance. That is a huge component, as you can see, it represents approximately 82% of the overall district general fund revenue, so it's sizable. And also, we have our federal revenue component. As many of you are well aware, we have federal funds, even outside of COVID-related funds, such as IDEA and other federal grants that we get on an annual basis that represent that 5.9 million. In addition, we have some other financing sources which are very minimal. But in totality, as you can see here, the total revenue picture for this year is estimated to be at $98.8 million. And as you can see here, we project out several years. We're going out five years to 2028. And making some very high-level assumptions on what we viewed as the governor's budget, which was put out earlier this year, as well as the legislative branches that also put out some estimates. And so what we did was try to be as reasonable as possible, and still yet not knowing definitively what those actual numbers are going to be for next year, as an example. So, the proposal that the governor has put forward with per pupil foundation allowance is $458. There's another proposal that's lower, and then there's another proposal which is higher. We chose to use the $458. And then what we've done is buried our revenue by about 4%. So we've added 4% as a foundation allowance to project out. That is the assumption that we are making going forward, as of today. And obviously, that could change based upon the new information that we receive on any weekly basis. In addition to that, we hired a demographer that we used in the past here in the district, Stanford and Associates, former U of M, oh, I'm sorry, U of M, MSU, how dare I say U of M, MSU professor that specializes in K-12. of M, MSU professor that specializes in K-12 and basically provided us with enrollment numbers for the next several years. So we utilized to a large degree the demographer's enrollment projections for this particular projection. As you can see, going out, Courtney's going to speak to the expense side of the equation. She worked very diligently on providing a lot of this detail. I did the majority of the revenue, the revenue component. But I just wanted to add, before I hand this over to Courtney, I wanted to show you the variations of revenue that we're projecting out with those high-level assumptions that I mentioned. And I wanted to be very specific about when I mentioned the sunsetting of many of these grants that we received due to both COVID, as well as our tragedy. You can see here, if you look at 2025, and the total revenue was 93.2 million as an estimate right now. It's fairly low compared to what we're currently estimating. That is the sunsetting of several grants. And so that's why we show a dip. And so we like to show this to you only because this is when the pain points really start to show themselves. And as you can see here, in that particular year of 2025, we are estimating that there is going to be expenses exceeding revenue of $7.4 million. So a sizable amount of money. And so the district needs to look further into how we're going to be mitigating some of that financial trouble that we foresee ahead beginning in that year. So. Do you have any questions before I hand the microphone over to Courtney and she can go over the expenses? Or would you, you want me to just go ahead and hand it over and you can continue? Or I should say, we could have Dr. Reese as well as Mary, they joined us on two occasions to go over the financials from their part of our committee. And so we met as recently as yesterday. Ladies, if you would like to discuss anything, if you want to wait, we could do that, or if you want to discuss now, it's up to you. Okay, great, great. Well, Courtney, I will control with Courtney.
Thank you. So I did most of the expenses. So about 80% of our budget is people, which when we got the money from COVID and from the tragedy, a lot of those grants were used to fund new positions that we needed for mental health and additional supports for the students. So that's kind of where you're seeing like our one-time expenses that we used to pay from with the grants, those are going away between 23 and 24. But we do still have those people in our budget. So as Sam was saying, we need to figure out how to mitigate some of those discrepancies in the revenue versus expenses because of that dip in the financial, the grant money that we will be receiving from the state and federal money. Do you have any questions about the expenses?
Anybody? Dr. Reese?
So I want to thank Sam and Courtney because they did spend tireless hours with Mary and I as we kind of tried to digest what all this meant. Mary and I, as you guys are aware, have been part of advocacy groups for K through 12, and we knew that the ESSER funds, which was COVID, would be ending. And this is not an Oxford conversation, this is a global K through 12 conversation because a lot of individuals adapted with those ESSER funds and how to use them. So the purpose of the finance committee that we started is to do the planning. So when we put up these numbers, I know it can seem shocking and scary, but the purpose of the committee is to start the planning components because that is where we inlay with advocacy work and other things to see if these, how we're going to do achievement and what it looks like. Also, the demographer that gave us the information gave us, I think, five years. And then, just to give you guys a background, the depth of this goes into what construction, new developments are happening, what industries are moving into town. I know if we look just south, we see GM building a huge EV plant, and that contributes to that. Also, at the age of our population at the last census, and there's a lot of different factors that go into it. So it's not just looking at a snapshot of today, but also what could potentially be coming based on some of the movement in the business communities that surround us. I think this is a great start. This is not the final product. This is our first draft as we get into it. The state fiscal year runs from October to September, but we run from July to June. So a lot of these numbers sometimes will look like a mismatch when we talk about grants or other types of funding. So be cognizant that there's a three-month period in between the academic year and the fiscal year for the state of Michigan, so things can look a little wonky from time to time in their carryovers. I think it's a great start. There's a, the key for the board members is on there to help because there are some expenses that we have on there that are large that will be going away, such as the Varnum and Guideposts, once they produce their last report, they will stop being paid by us because they'll be complete with their work at that point. Maybe other things will come out of that, but it won't be categorized as that per se. I think there's a couple of construction projects on there, too, that are going to phase out. But overall, I think there's going to be a lot of conversations and questions, looking at economies of scale in order to prepare ourselves for the future. And again, the governor's budget this year and next year could change the layout completely, and all of this work would have to be updated. So we do know that most of the K through 12 funding through the, is going through both the House and the Senate at the state level with a little tweaks and modifications, but it doesn't appear that anything that I had talked about a couple of meetings ago that was in the governor's budget is really going to be nixed completely. So we'll be looking at sustainability from this moving forward at our financial meetings, at the committee level, and also at the board meetings. So this is a conversation ongoing. Nothing should be a surprise when it comes to the finances of this district, to the staff, to the community, to anybody here, and that was the purpose of why we're doing this. So they'll have a lot of conversations surrounding it. But great work, guys. I know this took a lot of your time because we've never done one. The amount of detail that we had to go into to kind of look and see how funds were moved across through the organization, it's very tedious and there's a lot of little Excel lines. I promise, if you look at her book, it's intense. Her workbook, I should say.
I want to say thank you to both of you as well, and I really want to say thank you to Courtney because Courtney did a phenomenal job. She really did create the spreadsheet work that I used to do back when I was a senior financial analyst. Now it blows my mind because she's so far more advanced than I am because I haven't dug that deep in many, many years. But you did a great job, so thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. And again, thank you for your time and your, also, your leadership.
Very good. And I would like to add that it's, this is amazing that we put this together, the forecast. And in the same vein, we spent a lot of time in committee going over these numbers and asking these questions and working with each other so that all of the questions were being answered, that our numbers were conservative, and doing the work with the demographer, looking at our seated versus our non-seated OVA. So we really looked into the nooks and crannies to get a really good conservative view. So thank you for that. Thank you for all the great work. And it was a great summary, Dr. Reese. Thanks.
Amanda?
I just want to add kind of more towards the community and putting this in perspective. I know that we hear there's pain points coming and that we need to mitigate financial trouble, and it's kind of counterintuitive to what we're doing here tonight and improving millions of dollars of safety upgrades. But I also want to note that the money that we are approving and the safety upgrades that are happening this year are from grants that expire in September. So we use it this year or we lose it. And so it's, I just wanted to point that out because I know I would be sitting at home watching going, well, then what are you doing?
That's all. I'm glad you pointed that out because one of the things that you, in this budget, is there are different pockets of money that can only be used for certain things. And this is your general fund budget, which is your overall budget. And part of the, I mean, well, no, the whole purpose for doing this, and it is more painful the first year than it will be in subsequent years, I promise you that, is so that you have lead time when you do suspect that you're going to have to make adjustments in how you do business. And for us, that adjustment is going to have to start next year as we look at 24, 25. And I am confident that this is a living document, and as everyone has said, that number will not be 7.4 million. I'm hoping it will be less because I'm hoping we will begin today putting in efficiencies and putting in economies wherever we can. If you can start the saving process early, you don't have to recover as much later on. So your administration is also going to be looking at this along with the finance committee very carefully. A couple of the things we've put in place already is what I call position control. So any time a person leaves a position, we will study whether or not that position needs to be replaced, whether it needs to be replaced exactly as it left, or whether the position needs to be altered or in some way decreased. The other thing about position control is there are always requirements for new positions to come in. Your special ed numbers change, and that requires you to restaff for those special ed students so that you can provide the required free and appropriate education for them. But anytime a new position has been requested this year, much to, I know the frustration of some of our folks out there, we've put that under position control also. And the position, the need for the position, the requirements to do the position, and the fair market value cost of that position will all be studied before the position is approved and/or not approved. And these, there will be other business practices that we put in place because now we know that we want to impact that negative number in '25, if we can, long before we get to '25, because that's what will improve the entire forecast. As everyone has said, everybody felt the impact of this with the COVID money that came in. The COVID money was restricted to have you hire people. Now the COVID money has gone, and there's nothing to replace it. And so now all districts are struggling with that. This district got an influx of other money around the November 30th incident, and that required a lot of people to be hired, absolutely required and necessary and appropriate to do around mental health, around safety and security. And we have done that. As Guideposts said in their first report to us, as other districts have been saying, as we've been going to Washington and Lansing, thank you very much, telling people, it's not sustainable. What you've given us to do has worked well, but one-time money doesn't give us the ability to sustain what you want us to do. And we have to look at something that will help us do that. So I thank everybody, I thank you for supporting us and trying to be as forward-thinking as we can. This is living. You will see numbers change. June 13th, we're going to bring you just the 23, 24 budget. Sam will get to go through all the detail he loves to go through. If you're not careful, you'll probably get more detail than you want. And you'll have a budget hearing on that budget, and then on the next, last meeting in June, you'll be asked to approve that budget. But even then, because you have to approve it in June, we may not have a state budget yet. They may still be fiddling around with state aid. You never know. So budgets are always living documents. And one of the things, because of our financial forecast here, you're used to getting a budget amendment how many times a year?
We need one budget amendment.
Mid-year.
There's two total. One is usually around the February, March timeframe, and then obviously May or June.
Right. And Sam and I have talked, and because it's going to be very important for us to see where's the budget, where's our spending, where's the budget, where's our spending? We may be bringing you a budget amendment, maybe even quarterly, so that we can see those changes and track those changes more often. So it will be, your finance committee is going to be very busy, as will you, on these numbers.
Yeah, and I'll add, too, one of the other things we're going to look at is the special ed population in terms of them versus the general population, so we can get a good estimate of what that student enrollment looks like because they do require more resources, and it gives people, myself, like Mary, and those who talk to legislators at the federal level very specifically because they don't fully fund IDEA, which is the Individuals and Disabilities Education Act, I think is what it stands for, IDEA. They fund it currently around 14%, but legislative said it should be paying at 40%, but they've never fully come to realize that. And that, just even if they moved it marginally a couple percent per year over a couple fiscal years, would do a really great justice to a lot of the K through 12, just not Oxford, but a lot of the K through 12 districts throughout the country because what we do know and what we have seen is an increase in special education amongst student populations nationally, not just locally. Anyone who talks to legislators, IDEA, write that down. Fully fund, please.
I guess one of the things that we might want to look at is, as we look at our proposed forecast five years out, what are our sacred cows? What are the things that we're not willing to sacrifice on? Like, you know, obviously, safety and security. What are those things? What does that list look like? So when we look at them and say, okay, well, we talked about this two years ago, we're not, we really don't want to touch this. Unless it's absolutely, positively a necessity, we are not going to touch this list.
The finance committee talked about that the last time, and we are going to go through and set some criteria on things that we know we want to keep. But like with everything, school environments evolve, whether it's with technology or staffing or spaces, and keeping a thumb on what is coming down the pipeline as well, both from, and this will be a lean-in to the administrators who are usually a thousand steps ahead of me as a parent, you know, knowing what's coming down for the students and looking at the laws that require them to do their job and being ahead of that as well. So we know that criteria is not going to come in conflict with any requirements by law.
Having been in a lot of districts, and unfortunately, more have had to reduce budgets than have been able to grow them. So speaking from a lot of years of experience, the best default, the best yardstick is always the best interest of the students. What's best for their well-being, what's best for their learning, what leverages that learning the most. You can have a sacred cow in a district, but if it's not producing results with your learners, it perhaps shouldn't be sacred anymore. So I like to say, we should start with no sacred cows. We should begin to gather data. We should begin to look at our data. We should gather a lot of community opinions because every community is different, and we're going to do that. We're going to have to open up the conversation. It's going to have to be a wide one. But every meeting I start, it's going to have to be, where do we show that this is in the best interest of students? Where do we show that students can thrive without this anymore? Or if it's something brand new, how do we know that our students need this even though we've never had it before? So that's the place from which I'd like to start.
You know, one of the things that, as you look at, you know, we're talking about OVA and technology and everybody being over at Drainer Road. I think when you start having those like-minded conversations, those like-minded conversations spur, you know, growth. It spurs innovation, and this district has always been good at that. And we start putting those like-minded thinkers in the same room, I think it's going to pay off for us when it comes to this budget. But we also have to be mindful of the fact that we have to lead them in that, oops, I'm sorry, we have to lead them in that direction. So that's going to be the task of central office, the task of those people that are on top of that, in charge of those departments. But while there is a little bit of doom and gloom in the future, I think we need to look at it from a positive perspective, that we have a plan. It's a lot better to be thinking about it now than thinking about it six months before it happens. So I'm thankful for the work that y'all have done, and thankful for your leadership and guidance, and thankful for Mary and Dr. Reese for being involved in that because this is definitely a team approach that we have never had to do before, but it's a task that we must do. So, thank you.
Thank you again, Mary and Dr. Reese. It was great help, and we thank the community, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Courtney. Thank you, Courtney. So there is a... Item eight. You ready?
Yes.
Just want to make sure we don't miss anything.
I am going to do one introductory remark, Allison. Not that I know anything about technology, but I want to make an introductory remark.
Okay.
In the process of doing the five-year projection, and in the process of looking at funding sources, and where we could best use grant money, and where we could best use money that was set aside for very specific purposes, you have left in your sinking fund 1.2 million round figures dollars that can be used for very narrow purposes. Technology is one of them. The grants that we have been spending has wider range of purposes. So needing the flexibility in the budget projections that you just saw, we made a decision to fund these technology projects that are in front of you now, not from the original grant that we brought to you, but from the sinking fund, which can only be used for, you know, buses and technology and very narrow things, and a little bit of capital projects money and some other funding sources. There are still some grant funds in there as well. So it's multi-sourced versus single sourced now, in terms of the money that we paid for this. It's anticipating that you may approve this. It's baked into the five-year projection. It will not add costs to what you've just seen. It's already there. Should you not approve it, we will simply take it out. But it will not necessarily help the general fund budget you just saw, because most of it is coming out of a sinking fund budget that is separate. Okay? There.
All right. Okay.
So then I... I should just ask, any questions on that? Because I just...
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry. That was a no for me. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, so then I'm here today for your approval for the operational technology upgrades. As Sash presented last meeting, this is something that we are looking five to 10 years, that all of these things would help us. We know from being in this building alone, that cell and radio reception is an issue, and then that poses a security risk for our students.
Okay. So we have three motions.
Yes.
Somebody want to make the first one? Heather?
Move to approve the wireless upgrade purchase from Inacom TSG for the total amount of $915,088.
Is there support? Support, Amanda? Any discussion? And again, this was pretty much covered in our last meeting, so it's...
Yes.
It's not like we just got $915,000 and let's just spend it.
For those who were not here last meeting, there was an extensive presentation, and Sash was here to be able to provide the technical aspects that I did not provide.
Yep. Just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The second motion? Yeah, why don't you go ahead and read them all, and we'll go from there. Heather?
Move to approve the fiber optic cable upgrade purchase from M-Tech Network Solutions for the total amount of $259,000.
Is there support? Support, James? Any discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Final one, Heather?
Move to approve the radio cell upgrade purchase from MCA for the total amount of
Is there support? Support, James? Discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment kind of about all these things. I'm grateful that we found a way to use this grant money to make these kind of safety and security upgrades. I think these purchases are really important, and we have the people in district who know what we need and have done their research. And I'm just, I'm grateful that we were able to come together and do it the way that we did, and get this taken care of now versus kicking something down the road. So, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Keyless entry purchase request.
Yes, so this will be, this evening will be the first, and then we'll vote on this next meeting. But this is, much like we have on our outside, our exterior doors, where we're able to access certain rooms, certain doors with our key reader, we have, we're requesting that we attempt to do that for both our IDF closets, where's where our technology is stored, to add another layer of security for any of our network that is there. But that also allows, should we need anyone from our district level that doesn't necessarily have keys to that building, but has, we can give access to that building. When we have our contractors, they would be able to give access to that building on that day at that time, instead of having to figure out, do we need additional security? Do we need to have keys issued to that person? But it allows, again, that extra step for our network to be put behind an additional security measure. And then I'm also asking for the same type of thing for our front offices. Right now, once you're in the building, our front offices are accessible by an open door, again, leaving anyone who is in the front office at risk. And part of my job is to mitigate as many risks as possible, so adding that extra layer of the key card entry, so staff would be able to enter, those who are allowed to enter as needed, and then others would have to be granted permission to be buzzed in, much like that secondary door piece on our campuses right now. And so that is the information for today, and then next meeting, we would vote on that.
Okay.
Yes.
With that, you have the ability to turn off and on access...
Yes.
...in real time, immediately...
Yes.
...in any kind of security risk.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have someone within the technology department that, he's kind of my security technology person. He has a host of other things to do, but he is the go-to for that. So he is able to do that if we needed it right then and there, no matter what the situation was.
When you say front offices, you mean the entrance that the children would use to come into the office?
Yes.
So the children would have to be buzzed into the office?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Item C.
Okay. The list of recommendations generated by my departments come from multiple sources based on a comprehensive analysis of this district. The items that you voted on with technology and security were part of the analysis conducted by both of my departments, the safety, security, and the technology departments. So to create the list of recommendations that my departments have, we've used multiple data sources. This includes the SEC report from March of '22. This includes the vulnerability assessment the state of Michigan requires through the cybersecurity and infrastructure and security agency for the EOP. The building assessments conducted by Mr. Vernier and myself, as we are both trained in conducting building safety and security audits, along with Guidepost recommendations. One such recommendation from our list that I'm here tonight to discuss with you is a rapid response safe. I bring forth two proposals for this, and would like to expand on why we have two proposals and the justification for the purchase. As we are all too well aware, an active shooter in an active shooter situation, seconds count. Our intent is to save time, and depending on the proposal, provide our SROs and train security personnel with the tools they need to quickly engage and accurately stop a threat, thus saving lives. Matt Hardy, he's the Director of Operations at the National Association of School Resource Officers, said, "While there aren't official databases with numbers of districts that utilize such a strategy, it is becoming more common as school safety holds national attention." SROs that are working, the schools should have every tool that a patrol officer has at their disposal in the case of an emergency that may arise in the school. Ken Trump, who is the President of the National School Safety and Security Services, said, "In an active shooter situation, semi-automatic rifles such as an AR-15 could be more useful in stopping a shooter than a standard sidearm, such as a handgun that police hold in a holster. Having them available provides officers with the availability to counter someone with comparable weapon." So why this safe? Why this company? Mr. Vernier and I conducted research and consulted with local law enforcement, as well as area school districts who have purchased similar items. Majority of the safes in circulation use codes or fingerprints to access. Codes can be shared or forgotten, and that creates an additional security risk. Find motor skills decrease once your heart rate exceeds 115 beats per minute, meaning that you only have your gross motor skills to rely on, so fingerprint safes are not the best option in an emergency situation. The 360 Life Safety Rapid Response Safe allows for rapid access due to the built-in iris scanner. This safe eliminates using codes for access and requires no find motor skills. Unauthorized access is therefore eliminated. The safe has a backup power source and the ability to be integrated within our alarm system. Given the large footprint of the high school and middle school, there are several hallways that are too big for a pistol to be effective. The ability to access a long gun quickly will increase our chances of ending an active shooter situation more effectively. Other districts across the state and country have placed safes in the security office or visible locations, whereas ours would be in an undisclosed location without a drop ceiling, with additional security measures in place to ensure that only those who need to know would have access to the location. I am aware of at least four districts in Oakland County who currently have installed or in process of installing these safes. Should we move forward with six safes, which is one of the proposals, two of the safes would be accessible by our SROs and those who the Oakland County Sheriff's Office deem appropriate only. I, nor my safety administrator, nor any security personnel would have access to those safes or the materials within those safes. The other four safes would be accessible to the school safety administrator, security specialists, and select Fortis employees if we deem that. The district's security personnel would undergo additional training to meet the requirements of accessing the tools. The contract with Fortis would be amended to reflect the additional expectations, such as qualifications, training, and maintenance of weapons. Part of my department's expectations for our contracted security personnel is that they have police, fire, or military background. This, along with Fortis's robust professional development program, ensures that they are trained and capable of utilizing the tools if they had to. We would work with Fortis to develop specific criteria and expectations for the selected contracted security personnel who would qualify to access the safes. Employment with Fortis would not guarantee access to the safes. Should we move forward with the other proposal, which is the two safes, these would only be accessible by our school resource officers and those the Oakland County Sheriff's Office deem appropriate. Overall, the research points to having a strong preventative program in place, which is another component to our department. We are doing this through various professional development opportunities for all Oxford staff, either what we've been doing so far this year and what we have planned going into the next school year. We will continue to develop our staff to recognize pre-attack behaviors and work with Mr. Barless on all preventative measures. This purchase is but one piece of a multifaceted program that is school safety and security. This is a proactive approach to mitigate a risk should we have to approach the unthinkable.
Questions?
I just want to say thank you, because I sent you a huge list of questions, and every single one of them were answered tonight, so, shockingly, I'm good.
When you said these were going to be hooked up to the alarm panel, would that mean that if they were to be opened and stuff, there'd be a notification, not necessarily an alarm or anything, but just a tracking way...
Yes.
...to see when they're open?
We would have access to that, and much like with what we talked about with the key card readers, I do have someone within the technology department that would be in charge of that back-end feature of it.
Okay. So there'd be good auditing and stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Reese?
The Oakland County Sheriff's Department supports, wants these.
That's why they would have ones that are accessible only for their employees. They do currently have those in other districts in this county.
And those are just the SROs that are in our buildings currently, because they only have a sidearm and not other weapons?
Right.
And then if we, so if the other safes were put in place, who would own the weapons that are inside them?
Fortis would own them. We would not be, I'm not here to ask you to purchase any weapons.
Anybody else?
All right. I just want to make one comment. So we've gotten lots of emails about this from all different stances and stuff. For somebody that responded to the day in November and seeing, speaking to your point of find motor skills, watching hurt news fumble through keys to get into rooms so we could search and clear things out, just reinforces the fact that even though the situation, I would say, was getting closer to being, you know, where the threat was taken, the suspect was in custody, and we were doing our final checks and continuing to push through, but the fact of when that comes, those find motor skills are gone, so the fact that you guys are looking at something that deals with something, biometrics for security ability, for auditing and stuff, I appreciate you taking the due diligence and looking through and searching for, you know, what would suffice, and not something subpar, but also taking in consideration of what we've experienced and taking lessons learned from that and helping us move forward.
Anybody else?
I'm just not sure how I feel about this. I feel like we're taking a problem, a massive problem that we already are living through because of guns, and we're, our solution is more guns? And I am pro Second Amendment. I feel like, you know, people have the right to do things in their homes, but as a school... I don't know about this.
You know, this is one of the, is one of the problems with where we're at, right? We're in a situation where...
It already happened.
It's a situation where we are reacting to an event, and sometimes we, we get so involved in trying to look at things from every single angle. We have to, there is no, yes, this is the right answer, no, this is the incorrect answer. There is not a yes or no to this. This is about, what do you look at from a perspective of, what's the most important thing? And whether that's protecting students and being prepared, or giving five more minutes so that the SRO can go to their vehicle, get the gun, the long gun that's already in their vehicle, and respond in that manner. And that's just a dilemma that we all have to answer for ourselves.
But our SROs are armed, correct? So we're just talking about bigger guns.
But they already have them in their vehicles. You know, they have every Oakland, and James, you would know better than I, as an officer, and so would you.
Yeah.
Every police vehicle has a long gun in it. Now, it is secured by a locking mechanism. Is that accurate?
Yeah. So I, for most vehicles, they're secured with a locking mechanism, but it requires you to get into the driver's seat, turn the ignition to an on position, to set power to that, to unlock them. So add those seconds to it, and fumbling with keys, trying to get them into the keyhole, to then put them in ignition, to hit the release, to pull them out, to grab that stuff, secure your vehicle again, and then go back into the school. I, I am, I, the six safe thing, not so sure about that. For the SROs, to bring their tools with them inside the building, have them secured in their office, that is essentially an extension of their sheriff's office with inside of our schools, that they're already there, to cut down seconds or minutes, you know...
I guess the question that we have, I'm sorry.
No, I just, it's, I don't want to say it's a no-brainer, but it's like, when seconds matter that day, people have talked about it, like, if they could have only been there a few seconds sooner, they could only be there a few minutes sooner, what could have changed? What could have been, it's a tragedy, no matter how you slice it, but what could have changed? So, I mean, I'm sure, you know, I'm speaking for you, Allison, this is not an easy topic to approach and to present and stuff. But, you know, from Guidepost recommendations, from talking to the SROs, for looking at stats and other stuff, and we're not alone in this, and looking at this, other districts have done it, they're in place, they just don't have so much of a focal point on them while they're there. And if they're in a location that they're not, not going to be privileged to the public and stuff, I mean, I, yes, I work in law enforcement, I believe in Second Amendment, but I still, you know, this is one of those things that I'm going to have to think about and stuff. But to your point, yeah, they're in the vehicles. And so depending on where they're at, you know, it could be more time added to the clock.
And unfortunately... And, and unfortunately, I think we can all understand that there is a component to what's going on in our country, and it just doesn't happen in an isolated area. It could happen anywhere at any time, I think we, we have to be aware of that. But I think when we're looking at this, we have to look at it from a couple of different perspectives. Number one, who is going to stop the threat, and they gotta stop it quickly? Is that? Is that enough in your mind to say, "I'm good with two, I'm good with six safes, or I'm good with none of them"? We have to look at it from the perspective of stopping a threat, not keeping a firearm in the building, it's to stop a threat. That, that is the, the ultimate goal. The ultimate goal isn't to let everybody have access to it. It's a very narrow, very, I mean, it's essentially two people in Oakland County if you go with two safes. Am I correct?
Depending on what the Oakland County Sheriff's Office says, yes, but guaranteed it would be our two SROs.
Anybody else with thought?
But, like, I wouldn't have access to this.
No, and, and I don't think any-
It's not my world to have access to that.
I don't think that I would sit here and advocate for anybody in our building, any staff member, any principal, anybody. Listen, the reason that we have the SROs in the building and the reason that we have is, is, is because that's their job. You know, I, I see things all the time, well, you should put, uh, you know, you should put, uh, veterans in the buildings and arm them. Well, that's not the answer, I don't think, but you gotta have something there. You, you got, it's, I don't know, it's, it's a tough.
They are already armed, though, so we're really just talking about giving them access to more weaponry.
To the tools that they would already have if they were a patrol officer.
So they could run out to their car.
Yeah, not additional stuff, bringing the tools from their car and securing them in their office.
Would, would that be, would that be an option?
From what, let me, let me correct that. From what I understand from other districts in Oakland County who have done that, they are then issued a second long gun that would then stay. It wouldn't be traveling back and forth.
Okay.
And, and what I, and I-
Thank you.
I don't pretend any expertise in this area, so I had to ask some people, you know, what's the difference, and, and had some friends back home that are, uh, officers. And they said, "We're trained, Vicki, to do certain things with a long gun that you can't do with a pistol, and clearing rooms and, and getting into buildings, and, and you guys probably know this better than I do." And, and so they explained to me that, that there's two kinds of guns, and I'm not a gun person, are very different
Mm-hmm.
in terms of, of what you use them for, and their effectiveness is very different depending on circumstances. And I also understand that you would absolutely want to keep the gun in the car in case you happen to be in the car at the time an incident happened and you grabbed that gun right there. But if you're in the building at the time of an incident, they would like to have the gun in the building with them so they can grab it right there. This is a huge decision. I'm not, I, I'm very thankful I don't get a vote. Um, but that's, we have three weeks to think about it. We have three weeks to gather public opinion. We have three weeks where people can email us, and, and you guys are good at emailing us. I, I've experienced that so far, and that's a good thing. Um, so we have the time to be thoughtful, but, but what helped me, and maybe it would help, you know, some of you, to, to find some of these officers of the law and ask them about those differences, I can't explain everything they told me because I didn't understand a lot of it, but it helped me understand that there's two very different purposes to these two very different kinds of guns, and, um, and-
I don't think there's a debate on that. I think it's just a, um, I think it would be helpful to understand the evidence of not only K through 12 schools that have these in place, but other industries, and have they been effective, or is this just a, just in case? Um, I, I don't know if we would ever have known that detail. Um, and I, I think it would be helpful if the SRO, um, I think you do a great job, Allison, but I think that the depth of the topic and from the profession itself would be incredibly powerful, and I don't think this is something we need to vote on in three weeks. I don't know if there's a timetable on this, I think-
Going into the summer, so.
I also think that if we have a safety and security committee, that this certainly is something that they discuss, um, amongst that group, because it includes parents and it includes administrators and it includes, uh, board members, and I think for it to be just a really thoughtful process in presenting and, um, because it is very triggering, um, in this community anytime we talk about guns, um, and gun violence. And I want to make sure that if we're doing it, we know every nook and cranny of the why we're doing it, um, and the evidence that supports it. So I, I appreciate you doing this. I know it was a really tough, um, conversation to have today, so.
You know, it may be some, some law enforcement expertise, um, and, and even the other side of the conversation. You know, what, what goes into the decision-making is a kind of healthy conversation from both sides, and not just, you know, well, you get blasted from one side and you shut off the other. It's gotta be a healthy conversation so that we can make an informed decision, and really, it's an informed decision based on what our communities feel and pulses, and that's, that's really because we are, we are put here by our community, and so we have to, we have to be cognizant of that as well, so.
And I can work with Dr. Markovich to put you in touch with other districts in Oakland County that have that. I am not comfortable sharing those districts in a public setting because it's not public, they haven't put it on their website or anything like that. Um, but I am comfortable with reaching out to those districts to see if they would discuss that with you.
And I think also you made a very good point, Erin. We have, um, we have June, we have July, we have August, there, there isn't a rush. And, um, I think taking it before the district safety committee is a very good option to do, um, because on that committee, we have law enforcement, we have people who, uh, are from the community, we have people who, uh, we have the parents, and we have board members, as you said. So that is, um, a very good suggestion, and I would suggest we convene that committee uh, before we would, um, bring it back to the board for any further discussion.
Can I request further beyond the committee that we have, it's kind of like we had planned for the health clinic, some sort of community town hall meeting, presentation, something like that? Um, I know that everything doesn't have, happen in a vacuum, right? And most of, of the questions that Allison covered were from emails from community members, excuse me, were from social media, were from people reaching out and talking to us about this, which is really largely how we procured so many of these questions that, that she was able to cover. So I, I think that it's a wonderful resource.
Yeah, I think the one thing we did with the community health committee that was very good, uh, and I think it brought us much, uh, more community input than meetings do, was the survey we did, the pulse survey that we pushed out, uh, to our parents, and we had a huge response back. So as we learn more and we're able to put more information together around this and get people educated, I think perhaps that kind of survey would bring you, um, Todd, do you remember how many responses we got back on those two, the health-
I don't remember.
But it was-
We expanded it to K twelve.
It was very, it was a lot, and so I think that's an important thing, too, uh, to have public information meetings, I think would also be something we could do, but you typically do not get the wide range of community inputs you're gonna get from something like that, so perhaps both.
And I'll just reiterate, I think the safety committee would probably outline some of that because it does include those, and, um, I really think that some of these high-level purchases should go through that committee, even if it's be called, which is an open meeting for the public to attend as well to see decisions.
No, it's not. District Safety Committee is not an open meeting.
Oh, my bad.
Because you're discussing your school's security plans, you're, you're, and you can, if you put them out in the public, they're no longer security plans.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I thought it was for some reason, so that's my fault.
That's okay.
It's all right. We've all stepped one through doors.
I'd, I'd like to see, just with the SROs, if, if there's a, from the sheriff's office, if they have kind of their own policies and how they use these, maybe not naming districts, but to understand that aspect. If we were to do the two for the SROs, if there's something that they can give us to help us to understand on, on that, that aspect. I don't know if they would have something like that, that'd be able to share with us and stuff on it, but just, a-again, you know, full transparency and to help the community understand so we can all, you know, have as much information as possible and stuff.
Very good. You got that?
I do.
All right.
I have my notes.
Anybody else want to give, um, Vicki some ideas, thoughts? Okay. All right. Item number nine, unscheduled audience participation. Do you want to take a five-minute break? And then we'll get through these? Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break. All right. We'll start, uh, George Stauffren. So just, uh, just to kinda give everybody a heads up, uh, with the timer, it'll show right up there, when it comes on, the, uh, yellow button will light, the yellow light will go on, was it thirty? Thirty seconds or a minute?
Thirty seconds.
Yep, and then, and then once it goes to red, we'll let, give you about ten seconds to finish up the thought, and then, uh, because we got a few cards here, let's try to keep it to that timeframe.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Uh, my name is George Stauffen, uh, my daughter just graduated last week, and my son is currently in tenth grade. I hope you do not approve the proposal for storage safe for long guns and armor. There is no evidence that hardening our schools in this way makes schools safer. The research from a decade of research studies outlined in the Washington Post and, and in a report from the National Education Association, research out of Ohio State University, and the work of a number of individual researchers bear this out. Three studies from the Journal of the American Medical Association also bear this out. One of these studies from the Journal of the American Medical Association in particular is noteworthy. Peterson's and Densley's Presence of Armed School Officials and Fatal and Non-Fatal Gunshot Injuries During Mass Shootings, United States nineteen eighty to two thousand nineteen states that, and I quote, "The data suggests no association between having an armed officer and deterrence of violence in these cases. An armed officer on the scene was the number-one factor associated with increased casualties after the perpetrator's use of assault rifles or submachine guns. The well-documented weapons effect explains that the presence of a weapon increases aggression. Whenever firearms are present, there's room for error, and even highly-trained officers get split-second decisions wrong. Prior research suggests that many school shooters are actively suicidal, intending to die in the act, so an armed officer may be an incentive rather than a deterrent. The majority of shooters who target schools are students of the school, calling into question the effectiveness of hardened security and active shooter drills. Instead, schools must invest in resources to prevent shootings before they occur," end quote. Mark Folman's recent book, Trigger Points, speaks to the need to take preventive measures. His book is the result of an eight-year study that centers on the effectiveness of behavioral analysis and threat assessment rather than reactive measures such as introducing more weapons into the schools. I have heard often at board meetings about the importance of having research and data before decisions are made. My hope is that you make a decision based upon data and research and not based upon what you think might work. I also heard in recent meetings about the need to take time to absorb what is the first guidepost report, to find what we can learn from it so that we can make improvements. So let's do that. There's nothing in the guidepost report that recommends purchasing long guns and storing them in schools. Instead of pursuing this path with these storage lockers and weapons and armor now, we should take the time you suggested we take to consider what is in the report. Just tonight, we learned we will have limited resources in the coming years. We should dedicate these limited resources to mental health and social and emotional well-being of our students. That is what the report suggests. We should seek to follow its recommendations. Thank you.
Mark Gillum?
All right, so, uh, thank you, Dr. Markovich, for your thoughtful touch here. It's been greatly appreciated, and you add so much value. Um, we're so thankful to have you and all the new board members. Um, since the equipping our security teams with har, the proper hardware seems like a good move, what are we up to, a billion dollars we've sent to Ukraine so they can stack Russian bodies and protect themselves, and we don't want to protect our own people? That seems a little crazy. We probably shouldn't send any more weapons or money there either. Um, the security in the bathrooms were an issue leading up November thirtieth, the incident with, uh, the individual who ended up being the, the shooter, bringing in dead animals and stuff, and we just didn't know what happened in the bathroom because, you know, it's just like this free-for-all spot. I suggested that we put all bathrooms as single-use bathrooms, so everybody's not going in the bathroom together. Uh, I didn't see any indication of that on the plan. Is that something you could look into? If we're gonna spend a million dollars upgrading the bathrooms, single-use bathrooms would really be, kind of plug that security hole for all the effort everybody's going into. And then, um, a couple other things. Um, you're doing a really good job, Dan, of weaponizing the attorneys against this community, against every family that's a victim, and I don't know if you think you're doing a good job by doing that or helping us, but I'm not sure, you know, do the attorneys answer to you, or do you answer to the attorneys? Because it's really hard to tell from the perspective of the community. And, um, I think now that we know your immunity doesn't stand, um, in regards to gross negligence, um, your employees, your failure to implement policy and protocols to protect our children, I still think you guys should resign, anybody who was present, uh, November thirtieth, if you were in charge, you failed us all, you failed this community. And, you know, we were tired, but now we're getting our second wind, and now that the judges are starting to rule in our favor and hold you responsible, we're gonna push things to the fullest extent of the law to hold you all accountable for your failed actions to protect our children. Um, which leads me to my next issue. Uh, why are the employees who failed our district still working for this district? If you protect them, they should be gone, along with you. You mentioned Esser Grants, um, just a point with the forced masking. The reason you all said you had to mask our children against their will was because the Esser Grant told you you had to, and you couldn't give people that freedom. So any further contracts? Could you make sure that you're not selling our children down the river or their freedoms or their right to choose? That would be greatly appreciated. And, um, you know, I just, I think if you could uh, search your heart and understand that this entire community's sitting here watching you, and it was your failure, it was your watch, and you sit here like you have the answers, and we're sitting here like it's, it's like a big joke to us.
Thank you.
I don't know how you expect us to take you serious.
Thank you.
Michelle McClellan?
Hi, thank you, it's Michelle McClellan.
Sorry.
That's okay, everybody, my family adds ends, it's all right. Um, anyway, thank you for letting me come up here and speak. Um, just, you know, in regards to the gun safe, um, I really don't agree with having more guns in the school. Um, you know, if the SROs are armed, it's my understanding, we had on November thirtieth, I thought there were armed people in the school. Um, I don't think adding more guns to a school is anything that's gonna make kids feel safe. Um, you know, when they do studies and they ask kids, they, there's, um, studies out there saying, or surveys out there saying that they don't feel safer with more guns in the school. Um, I would, uh, somebody was mentioning, talking about law enforcement and asking them what they think about the safe and guns in the school and that kind of thing, but I would say, why don't you look at research? Look to see, you know, there's been unfortunately so much research now about what happens, what, you know, how people feel after this, and, you know, what works. So I would say get research before you decide what you're gonna do with this. Um, I'm wondering where the recommendation came from? Are we, you know, going to a school security business and asking them, like, oh, what should we put in? Of course they're gonna tell you, put more school security stuff, you know? If that's the case, you know, I have swampland- If that's the case, you know, I have swampland in Florida for you. I mean, I just don't understand what, where this is coming from. Um, I wanted to read something that was from trace.org, and it taught, it's a study, um, that was done by University of Texas, uh, criminologist, and, um, they found that gunmen have often targeted schools with armed guards. In four high-profile two thousand eighteen school shootings, Kentucky's Marshall County High School in January, this is two thousand eighteen, Florida's Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in February, Maryland's Great Mills High School in March, and Santa Fe High School in Texas in May, attackers stormed campuses despite the presence of armed guards. In all four of those cases, guards failed to stop the gunman from killing. And in other studies within their findings, they found that, um, it with school shootings, often it wasn't, the, the gunman was not stopped by a security guard or anything like that. They like generally were restrained or just stopped on their own. Like, they weren't shot, it wasn't, there was no use to a gun there. I think if we want to really think about our kids, we have to think about what is gonna make them feel safe being in a school, and I personally don't think a gun safe sitting there to hold more guns is gonna make them feel safe. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I am relieved to hear an appropriate amount of hesitancy about such an impactful decision, and would strongly encourage the board to pursue the ideas before putting forward us, uh, and pursue putting forward a community survey, listening opportunities, and further research. But I will say that militarizing our schools isn't the answer to solving gun violence. We're so fo- focused on transforming schools into targets so intimidating that they will not be approached. We try metal detectors, armed guards, and now maybe a vault filled with long guns and armor. At the same time, we're ignoring the fact that one of these measures to harden our schools in the form of an armed guard failed to protect students on November thirtieth. So let's be very clear on what is happening today. The implementation of this proposal would prepare our schools to be war zones with arsenals in our buildings. We are not talking about protecting our students and educators with solutions based in fact. My concern is that if the board chooses to implement this proposal, it will just be another failure of Oxford to listen to, recognize, and center the needs of students and educators. While I realize a lot of attention towards gun violence prevention is given to the state and federal governments, schools have a large, uh, role to play here at the local level. Our attention and resources should be directed to more pressing matters in the district, implementing a program to teach students how to care for themselves and one another, continuing to develop, to develop and adapt the recovery plan, and inviting Honor Health back into the district to craft a solution that works for everyone. The latter would not only provide low-income families with critical healthcare access, but also provide additional mental health professionals, something we so desperately need here in Oxford. Oxford kids are not okay. We can't continue to be reactive, let's be proactive and set an example for other school districts looking to prevent tragedies and protect the emotional and social well-being of students and educators. As an Oxford High School graduate of this year, with fellow friends, educators, and two siblings in the district, I urge the Board of Education to reject this proposal. This is not the answer to keeping our schools safe, and as an advocate for Oxford students and educators, I will not stand for it. Thank you.
Okay, so as evidenced by a student, um, the students have made their voices very clear, uh, so clear in fact that the ACLU, um, feels that their First Amendment rights were violated by not letting them wear orange quarters. So, uh, they've been very clear on their stance. I'm wearing a T-shirt that says March For Our Lives, where over six hundred people came to Oxford to march against gun violence. These kids have been very clear on where they stand with this. Uh, so the tone deafness is a hard pill to take. Um, I agree with Heather, the answer to guns is simply not more guns. Um, we do need to work on the very long list of guidepost recommendations before we start introducing other things into the mix. Um, so let's talk about the SRO, because it's my understanding that they're going to be carrying these weapons from their patrol car into the building each day to lock them. So what is the security protocol that we would have for that? How would that make the students and faculty that already have PTSD feel seeing AR-15s being carried in and out of the building each day? Is that something that we considered? Cause I haven't heard anything about the security of that. Um, also with that, the rate of workplace mass shootings is increasing daily. And so I did a little bit of research on SROs and police officers, and the data is not great on this. Of the police officers reported, twenty-six point five percent reported hopelessness and a significant association was found with depression and burnout. In individual cases, these conditions were associated with suicidal thoughts. So, I'm not against police, but we have to admit that there is definitely some mental health issues there, um, and so we're, it's another caveat of adding in an element that could be dangerous in this building by bringing guns into it. Also, I want to argue the point that they would have quicker access to these guns because they're locked away in an office. We don't actually know that. Perhaps patrol car would have been at the other end of the building where a shooting is taking place, and it would be quicker to go there. So we can argue semantics about that all day, all day long, but in a certain situation, seconds do count, but it doesn't mean it's only gonna go one way. It could go both ways, so we, there's no way to prove that. Um, also, I do wanna talk about Dan's comment that you made earlier. The reason we have the SROs in the building is because that's their job. We were failed tremendously by Officer Potts. It was her job, she opened the door, but she walked away. What difference would it have made if she had a long gun? She didn't use her pistol, she didn't do anything.
President De Alessandro and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Emily Bush, and I'm a parent of a tenth grader at Oxford High School, one of the many students forced to run for his life on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. I'm here today because this district has repeatedly pledged to address the root causes of a terrible shooting that claimed four children's lives. It's now been five hundred and thirty-nine days, and yet, the talk has led to no action. And that is not unique to this board. In the immediate aftermath of the school shooting, we talked about mental health. Not only as a way to confront the trauma of those impacted, but also to address the root causes and prevent future shootings. But after five hundred and thirty-nine days, countless meetings, and federal resources denied, what do we have to show for it? Some very expensive safes that security experts say can easily be cracked with simple items like screwdrivers, a hammer, or even paperclips and straws? Is this really what we want? To turn our schools into war zones? The research is clear. Prevention starts with fostering safe, trusting home and school environments. It's imperative that we refocus on the needs of our kids, on teaching kids coping skills, how to manage emotions, how to feel and show empathy for others, how to establish and maintain supportive relationships, and how to make responsible, caring decisions. Too often, kids' feelings of loneliness, disconnection, and isolation are ignored with adults saying, "It's just how teenagers are." But when kids lack connections and don't have the tools to manage their emotions, their mental health and well-being suffer. And we know that shooters nearly always exhibit warning signs of potential violence that concern the people around them. So why then are we rushing to put loaded weapons in schools when the district has yet to invest in programs that can prevent grievances from escalating into attacks? If guns made us safer, we would be the safest country in the world. So before you rush to put more loaded weapons in our schools, I urge you to address the very real mental health crisis among kids and children's access to firearms in the home. This isn't about politics, it's about protecting our kids. That's our job. The research is clear. Prioritizing mental health and providing the support that students in crisis need is proven effective prong of multifaceted prevention strategy. I urge you to take immediate action to address the root cause of the problem. Thank you.
Um, this is not the way to move forward. I'm here to oppose weapon vaults to be installed in our district. Why exactly would we need this? I think you said it was forty-five thousand dollars, I'm not sure if that's it, but, um, that would make no difference, um, on November thirtieth, um, to have a stockpile of guns. Um, I think, Dan, you said, what could have changed? Um, what could have changed on November thirtieth? I think reporting behaviors instead of hiding them would have made the school safer. I think common sense and following protocols could have saved lives. I think having, um, a real threat assessment team would have saved lives. Asking about access to guns, checking backpacks and lockers. Do not send a student, um, who's leaking violence back into the class, into the school population. Those are simple things that could have saved lives that day, um, that just weren't done, and those things are free. Um, contacting law enforcement, this is a huge one. I think, um, well, hold on. I think, um, having a long gun, having a hundred long guns would not have helped, since it seems that the school is steering problem students back into the school rather than the justice system. It is a fact that the school did not report EC, um, behavior to the authorities, um, and I'll quote this. Sheriff Mike Bouchard believes Oxford High School, I mean, he said this, Oxford High School should have told police about suspects' behavior before the shooting. Um, I can't even get my head around the fact that it was just not reported. I think reporting behaviors instead of hiding them would make the school safer. Um, I don't understand where the idea of getting a weapon vault came from. Um, I'm wondering if you were approached, or did you, did you approach them? Um, how did you envision this helping our students and staff? Um, is the next step to purchase guns? Is it financially, financially viable if we are foreseeing financial trouble of about seven million dollars? I just, I don't understand why we'd want to spend so much money on these vaults. Um, is it being considered, is it being considered because of a grant for security that must be used, or we lose it? Um, I just, uh, a weapons vault is not in the best interest of the students. Um, that's basically it for me to, oh, good timing. Um, so yeah, thank you.
I think he might have been that guy that left.
Okay.
I think he might have been the gentleman, does anybody know, was that him? The guy sitting in the front?
Okay. Jennifer Curry?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer, I am, um, the mother of two elementary-age students, and I'm coming to you on behalf of them. Um, I feel like I, I so have so much thought, um, going out to all the high schoolers, our whole district, all the families, everything that we went through, but I feel like our elementary students often get forgotten in the mix of all this too. Additionally, I'm a nurse, and I only mention that because I see things in the hospital that I think anybody that's in education or healthcare see every day. Our children are not okay, not just here, but everywhere. They are experiencing a mental health crisis like we have never seen before. We have children just sitting in emergency rooms waiting for placement, cause there's nowhere for them to go. They don't know where to go for help, and they try to get help from us as adults, as teachers, and whatnot, and I, I don't know if we know what to do either. But what I can tell you is that, given the history of everything that's happened here, my knowledge as a nurse, everything that I know as a parent, I know that adding guns and weapons into our schools, that's not the way to go. I don't want to bring up hurtful things that have happened, but I just have to. Let's look at the facts, the brief history of our district, okay? So, we have risk assessments that were just not done, not fully implemented, or poorly done. Um, we have questionable judgment of trained and educated counselors and staff on the day of eleven-thirty. We have a history of our own high school resource officer not taking action appropriately when it mattered, when they had a weapon, my understanding of it. And I can't believe nobody's mentioned this, six months ago, we had an accidental discharge of a weapon on school grounds, here, at the middle school. And that was somebody, I reread the email today, it was somebody with twenty-eight years of experience, twenty-eight years. And here's what we know, we all make mistakes, it's just one mistake, right? But that's all it takes. So why would we want to introduce that back into our school and open that door to another mistake when we've already made so many mistakes? I am Oxford's biggest cheerleader, I love this town, I love our schools, I love our teachers, but please, like, things like this, when they come up, it sounds so tone-deaf. Read the room. I mean, it just, I want to cheer for you, I want to be your cheerleader, and this does not make me cheer for you. So please make me proud, please open it up to the public, do more research on it, and please do not bring guns into our schools. It doesn't work. Thank you.
Hello, um, I had a whole thing prepared, uh, but everyone here has brought up so many good points, and they've already pointed out that there's little to no evidence that adding guns and hardening our schools improves the safety, but, um, when I saw this on the agenda last week, I called, uh, Mr. Vernier, uh, directly, and amazingly enough, he answered at commencement. But we were able to talk for forty-five minutes the next day. And over and over, when I was talking to him, uh, he kept bringing up the Covenant School Shooting in Tennessee, that that's the reason we need these. Um, and he pointed out that the gun safes will be a deterrent, um, to stop school shootings because in the manifesto for that shooter, they had two schools in mind, and they chose one over the other because one was more heavily guarded. So I want you all to think, over the next three weeks, if you put these gun safes in the high school and the middle school, what's that alternative school? It's the elementary schools where my kids are, where your neighbor's kids are, where your friend's kids are, okay? So you're not stopping a school shooting with these gun safes, you're deflecting it. You're deflecting it to a different target. And let's say we put gun safes in every school, all of our schools, the shooter is not going to stop. They're not gonna say, "Oh, oh, I guess we're done here, go back to my normal life." They're gonna pick a different target. What is that target gonna be? Downtown? The businesses where you all shop? Meyer? Somewhere else? The movie theater? This is not a good solution. This solution, at best, if used and saves seconds, only lowers our body count. That's not okay. That's not okay with me, and it shouldn't be okay with any of you. And I'm sorry if I'm very angry tonight, but this is just ridiculous, I can't believe we're even considering this. Thank you.
Um, like Jen, everybody has already reiterated, there is no data, no research in existence that says adding guns to a situation makes something safer because it just doesn't. That is, um, I will say there's no independent, peer-reviewed research because special interest groups will, will produce data that is, um, biased. That's- That's not legitimate research. It's not legitimate data. Um, so when we talk about why these are important to have in our schools, we, we had armed security in our schools, and they didn't make it to the situation in time. So now we want this armed SRO or security person to then take additional time instead of going to the immediate threat and then go to a safe and then put on armor and then go to the threat? No, I want them going to the threat immediately. We also have talked a lot about fine motor skills, um, degrading throughout these presentations so much that someone can't put in a PIN code to open a safe, but we're going to give them an AR-15. That makes no sense. I'm sorry. Zero sense. Additionally, this proposal does not address any of the gaps by, um, guideposts. We should spend that money on, we hired these experts and paid a lot of money. We should look at what they are recommending. And I can just give you an example. I was at the Performing Arts Center about a week and a half ago for my son's third-grade concert. There was another elementary concert right before his. The lobby was packed. The Performing Arts Center was packed. The evolve systems were blocked and there was no security. If anything, that's a soft target, either for a, an event to happen there or for someone to bring in a weapon to store and use at a later date. Let's use our heads here. Um, I'm also really concerned, um, about, does this tie us in a contract with Fortis if we want to change security vendors? Um, I did a little research online, and I found that Fortis and 360 Life Safety share the exact same address of 304023 South Old 20, South Old US 23, Suite 108, Brighton, Michigan. They are both located in the same office. So why are we doing business, spending $45,000 on gun safes with one company that's in the same suite as our security company? Are they even separate companies? Um, lastly, I want to add, it's exhausting as a parent to only find this information out by scouring attachments embedded within, um, our board meeting agendas. It furthers the perception that this district is untrustworthy and not transparent. And honestly, if we have these safes put in any of our schools, my son will not attend those schools. Period.
Megan Gregory.
Coming here tonight, I was really excited to hear about the bathrooms. To say I'm devastated right now is an understatement. After months of asking, presenting, working with companies who are more than willing to donate and give help with reconstruction, I was told we were only in the beginning stages and there were no decisions made. I was told they would contact the companies. I gave them all the information. Crickets. The one thing I ask is that doors don't get removed. If you have to keep them open, keep them open, but don't remove them. I'm curious how this is mitigating risk. I do know what would have mitigated risk on the bathroom doors on November 30th. Locks, having an SRO in the building, having someone yelling over the PA where the shooter is. I can go on and on. Unfortunately, I'm tired and anxious knowing that I have to now go home and explain to my kids that the school's answer to their fears is to completely remove the only thing that might save them. I guess the only positive is that if this scenario happens again, those kids won't hear the door open and have to obtain any false hope.
Kara Erskine.
Today, I stand before you as a concerned member of our school community, a US veteran, a former auxiliary police officer for Ferndale, a social worker, and a mother of an Oxford High School student. The proposal to introduce gun safes with long rifles in our schools cannot happen. And while I understand the intention behind this idea, it is crucial that we carefully consider the potential risks and unintended consequences associated with it. The National Institutes of Health in 2020 had a comprehensive study that said that the presence of firearms, especially long rifles, in an educational environment increases the likelihood of accidents. Now, we have witnessed incidences where even trained security profess, trained security personnel failed to handle firearms properly within our own schools, some even resulting in tragic outcomes. These accidents highlight the potential dangers that may arise with proper safety protocols even in place. Just knowing that they are potential long rifles in our buildings may heighten the anxiety levels and hinder the healing and recovery process of our students, which is so important to all of us. The American Psychological Association and the National Association of School Psychologists emphasize the importance of nurturing emotional well-being and minimizing stressors to support students' mental health. And by introducing these long rifles, we risk undermining their progress and overall well-being. It is important to note that the reports from the United States Secret Service, the Department of Education, and our own guideposts do not mention the use of gun safes with long rifles as an effective approach to school safety. Instead, all of these reports emphasize the significance of creating a positive school climate and implementing the threat assessment protocols. Considering the traumatic experiences our school community has already endured, I urge the school board to prioritize prevention, intervention, and support systems. Let us focus on enhancing school security through the increased counseling services, the implementation of the threat assessment teams, and fostering a positive relationship with counseling and law enforcement. These proven methods promote a safer educational environment and allows our schools to fulfill the primary role of educating our children versus being reactionary. Let's entrust the responsibility of firearms to the law enforcement. And I think Vicky said it best when she said, "Children first." Our own IB curriculum encourages students to think critically, explore emotional and critical areas, and foster development of emotional health. So I plead with you to do the same. Thank you.
Is there any? Did we miss any? Okay, all right. Lot to think about. Item number 10, our scheduled activities. We have, uh, OVA commencements, Bridges commencements, and, uh, last day of school is June 9th. Any administrative clarification? Final board comments? James.
I just want to take a time and tell everybody that came out and speak today. I really appreciate it. All your emails, I read each and every one of them if I don't even respond to them, so continue to do them. George, if you're still in the room, I, if you could send me those researches and the, for the other ones that closed today. My perception is only so big, so I look to the community to help widen that and to learn. So I appreciate everybody that spoke tonight.
Okay, so, this, I don't think comes as much of a surprise to some. It may come as a surprise to others. Some people may jump and cheer. My time on the board is almost over. Uh, I will be moving out of the district. That time will be either June 1st or July 15th. Um, I want to see this through as much as I,
July 1st.
What did I say, June?
July 1st.
July 1st, I'm sorry. Be either July 1st or the 15th. I want to try to complete some of the things that this board is undertaking. Um, but I also want people to know that this is something that, uh, I've given a lot of thought about. And as much as I would like to slow the process of my house down, um, I can't do it anymore because my wife is not real happy with that process. So, um, we'll be making some, some, uh, movements on the board. I would just like to just ask everybody to give these people some grace as they have a lot of difficult decisions to make. I think, um, that this community is, is, um, it's a phenomenal community. And, uh, yeah, so, with that said, uh, anybody with any other final board comments? No? Okay. Um, meeting is adjourned.